Or let's get over to that point maybe. So like a new set of green covers? Is this a yes from mostly? So we'll keep that yellow. Um, the Pro Gator John, John Deere work vehicle, is this a, a go or a?
I think that's a no go. Uh, I think I would like to see the trailer auction or something first.
And I would, I would support it or I would support the dip more, one or the other.
Which would you prefer, Jason, of those?
Well.
How much is a?
Well, I guess mine, a lot of mine comes down to the hundred fifty thousand dollar bathroom. I mean.
That's where I'm at.
There, there's a swing right there of a lot of, I mean, drop the bathroom gator uncomfortable with, add the bathroom, I think the gator could probably wait.
That's why I said the trailer option is gonna be a lot cheaper right for right now.
But I was thinking if we got grants for that hundred fifty five thousand, then the rest of this is change.
Yeah. I'd like to see the grant first.
There's an if there. I think I should point out that this mower triplex. Um, I probably have on my desk now, uh, we found a use, because in the, we have in the current budget, some funds for this. Um, I wasn't sure we were gonna find one in time, so I'll make sure I added this to the budget. I'm pretty sure we can take this one off the table, because.
Okay.
I think we're gonna buy one before we move this.
Right, there it goes.
Red it is.
And so.
And your entryway landscaping, was that at the, right as the drive in off of airport road? Is that the entryway landscaping?
On Spruce, west side of Spruce. Uh, but we, so.
That's the wave, new entryway wave funding or whatever it was.
No, no, not, 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 uh, wave or.
It's a Rawlins sign.
Welcome to Rawlins. No, this is just landscaping. So this is separate from that other item that we looked at, the wave funding.
This is the landscaping study, like if we were gonna do some serious landscaping, let's do a study on.
Which entryway?
So the idea was the west end of town on Cedar by, or Spruce.
Okay, this is a good use of money.
This is a, this is a study?
No, it shouldn't be a study, it's actually.
Well, it's, and it's, it's part of it's a study, but also part of it's making some improvements to, to give us an idea of what we can do to, to, to beautify those exits, the people coming off eighty, that's their first view of, of Rawlins.
Yeah.
And we want it to look nice. And so the idea is, let's see what we can do to make those improvements. And then we can go from, so the entrance sign to the west of town, or the welcome to Rawlins sign west of town, that area moving east. And if it's working in subsequent fiscal years, we can go on the east side of town, and I heard somebody say north and south as well.
Yeah.
So the idea, that, that was a kind of a big part of the strategic plan of beautification, was to address our entryway landscaping, although, um, six penny, it, um, it, I think it was Mylar that brought up. Um, there's future six penny funding for the entryways, is that right?
It's like four hundred thousand or something, right, Danielle?
Four hundred and fifteen.
Sure.
Four hundred and fifty, so.
Low maintenance landscaping at entryways.
Well, I, I actually don't think it's designated specifically to entryways, I think it's city rite of ways is how it's stated.
Okay.
It's rite of ways, it's rite of ways, not entryways.
So there's that potential, and I think that might be where Sean's saying this could be more better used as, as coming up with a plan, right?
Yes, so when we already use that big chunk of change, we know how to use it.
Who's gonna do the plan? Are you gonna have the engineer, or are you gonna have our rec people do it?
I think that would be a combination, um, probably somebody that knows this area, this climate, what grows well, and understands design as far as, because I don't think it all has to be natural, I think some of it could be, um, rock formations or, um, statues, but you know, things like that, um, that could be incorporated as well.
So, so if I may, it seems like the sticking point, if I heard right, is the, is the bathroom? Should we move that over to the side for now, and then see if we can get funding for it, and then, and then talk about the rest of these, or, or what do you think about that?
For the bathroom?
Mm-hmm.
I think the, I think it's a needed, a well-needed thing at Washington Park, and I, my thought is, is if we replace that on an agreement to, if the grant comes through to use that grant money, the, uh, the grant money, if we get that, to do the one at Bolton Park, so we get two for the price of one, ultimately.
Do we? Do we know the total of everything excluding the rest, the restroom?
Five hundred and eighteen minus hundred fifty five.
We're, uh, we're at four hundred and ninety-nine, when we take that one red item out, that's all.
Yeah, three fifty without the bathroom, basically.
So if we take the bathroom out, yeah, three forty-four. For the rest of it.
Okay, we took the.
For all of them?
Just, just playing with numbers there, if we throw that out? That's the three forty-four.
I really like the idea of replacing one at Washington Park right now, and then if the grant, if the grant money comes through from the rec board, then we just do ra- uh, Bolton, right?
Right, so that, so that does take.
It's an upgrade to two parks for, it's almost like a matching fund at that time.
And if possible, you can get money for both of them, because it depends on how much money that recreation is.
Yeah.
And, and our county should be right, um, the mill levy should go up and therefore more money to be dispersed by the rec.
The dilemma, I think I, I, I personally have looking at that is, if we're saying that by adding this, we're gonna lose out on a lot of these, um, I'm thinking, you know, rec board, I'm thinking if the city council approves hiring a, a grant rider, I'm thinking that the reality is this restroom hasn't been replaced for so long, what if we do wait another year? But the, the, where I have trouble with that is, if we don't get grant funding, we still have two restrooms to replace. But can we just have this same conversation we're having right now next year? Except maybe I'm saying, well, we got one of them knocked out with a grant from rec board, or our new grant rider found other funding to replace that. But look what we got, we got all this other stuff taken care of. So I guess that's one of my questions is, if we remove the restroom this year, and go really after grant funding, does that, does that help support the rest of these?
In my eyes.
Almost equally as important.
Do we know when the rec board, uh, grant is due?
I think I was told August.
August?
August.
So it's gonna be coming up soon, so.
That's why we, that's why this is in here, in case we didn't get that grant, and we had city council's approval. And then the other part is, if they did get that grant, then like I mentioned earlier, we would get Washington and Bolton Park.
And the other thing.
What's the chances of asking for all three?
Yeah.
All three restaurants through the, uh, any rec, county rec?
I haven't.
If you don't ask.
I just know a little bit of history, I haven't.
I, I think it's probably one of the better projects that, that I've heard.
I'd like that.
Go forward.
Don't ask, you don't know.
We use the baseball park, we meet all kinds of.
Oh, yeah.
That's, I mean, that's a good project. I think they would, they might cut it.
Yeah.
But it doesn't hurt to ask for it all, and they'll cut it.
And I don't know a lot about the rec board, I do know a lot about grant writing. One thing that crossed my mind is, when we went to the rec board, what if we asked them for matching grant funding for each of these restaurants? So we're still asking for the same hundred fifty five thousand dollars, but the way we present it to them is, we're asking for actually half of this, we're gonna match the other half. So they're buying into two-part restaurants with their money, instead of just giving us the same amount for one.
That would work. Yeah, you tell them you're gonna.
It just sounds better to them, I think, because they're able to have like two, it's the same amount of money.
Is there a way we could have someone have that grant wrote by that time and, and go defend that grant? I'm just asking.
Um, they'll put out an ad in the paper, Chris, and then the staff will do their normal thing, and so we'll get that in July to probably float upon. Uh, I guess what I'm trying to get down to is that, um, how you wanna, we can always amend the budget.
Yeah.
For the hundred fifty five, because if the revenues keep coming in the way that they are now, I can say that for this year, maybe next year, but not beyond that. Then I don't see any problems with us taking a strong, hard look at funding, at least after that, and go to the record for the other half. It's a wonderful strategy, and the rec board has been really good to us. I know that you're using a lot of their own money for their own school district, but then that's, that's what is there for.
So do we like his top six?
I like all of them.
Do we wanna, I mean, do we wanna cut any of those, or just rock with his top six? The, the yellow ones, right?
So, um, if I could quickly point out, um, where do we go? Rockwood Park's basketball court, the concrete repair. One thing I've quickly learned about this area and this climate is it's horrible on concrete.
Yes.
I mean, the house we just bought, I, I have a bunch of improvements to do, just on the drive, just concrete. And I see that at parks, and I originally said there, there's some safety issues, there are some safety issues with Rockwood Park, um, in the concrete, it's, it's not huge safety. Um, but it, it, it should be addressed. The other safety issue, in a way, is the weight room improvements. It's really outdated, there's no ADA access, or there's no, um, ADA equipment, or handicap accessible equipment. Um, and I hope I don't offend anybody by saying this, but I think Wyoming is a little bit behind the times when it comes to things like ADA access.
Absolutely.
And it's right in front of what I really wanna look at.
Twenty years behind everything else.
I was trying to be nice. But I really feel that it is important for us to stay way ahead of the curve, because it's coming. And, and, and it's gonna come, and people are gonna want ADA access. It's gonna be our parks, we don't have handicap parking in all of our parks. They don't have access to the playgrounds at every one of our parks. Sean and I have a plan to make that start happening. But I wanted to bring up in the past also, these are all important, but when I really start to inspect our playgrounds and other parks and facilities, we've already taken out some equipment. We've already barricaded off some areas, we've already removed some, um, elements to our parks and playgrounds that weren't safe. So that was my first priority, well, we gotta close it off. But there's more is gonna need to be done at certain parks, and, and I'll have a plan for the city council to look at. And maybe we focus on certain parks, one on maybe the south side, and then maybe one over here. That we, so we're not having to spend a ton of money on every one of our parks, but we're making a concerted effort to start somewhere to bring our, our parks up to code. And, you know, if it's not safe, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna have to do something. But anyways, I wanted to throw that out there, that's.
Thank you so much.
Kind of the bigger picture, and again, five, ten-year, even twenty-year plan.
So we took the mower, mower and triplex out, that's thirty thousand.
Yep.
Uh, we took out.
Kinda need to know about the orange there now. Took out the, um, the parks, the, the bathroom.
Washington Park.
Yep.
Yeah.
You've made repairs already, though, some repairs to the basketball court to make it, to correct some of it.
No, I, I, I mentioned that I would go down there and look at that, and when I went down there and looked at it, it, on a second thought, when I really put my safety hat on and my playground safety inspector, I, it's how things are built here, it's just like the, the, um, basketball court at, at Bolton Park. It's just, it's got a lip like this tall, which seems strange to me. If it's a curb, I get it, but it's like this much, and it just seems like a trip hazard. But I wasn't that concerned that we had to go make it immediate, um, renovated, because then, we did talk about that, or we talked about this last time.
And I see the hydration stations at the rec center as a health issue.
I do too, it's a.
A COVID issue.
It's a cleanliness issue.
So we should be able to use some of the COVID infrastructure money.
And it's a maintenance issue, I talked to facilities, and they've had to make repairs to them all the time. Uh, but sanitary also, I mean, not everybody brings these. You know, there's a, a bottle over there, people bring their own water bottles, and I see him over there with the drinking fountain, you know, with their water bottles. These will come equipped with both, so you can put your cup up there that you brought from home, you're, you're not putting things like this in the landfill. And you're getting, you know, fresh water out of there.
Is there a one in the COVID relief stuff for that?
It just goes to, it just goes to our fun balance and the general, but yeah.
We should be able to use that.
Yeah.
There was consideration, I don't know if you wanna talk about capital versus operations, we just leave it like this.
Yeah.
I think we're good. So, so on the seventy-two deck mower, yay or nay?
I'll, I, that ended up lower on my priority, but I do wanna pitch for that, there's probably, maybe all of these are my number three priority. It's, it's a kind of a difficult thing, because they are important.
So, so.
And this isn't important.
So coun- so council, yay or nay on seventy-two deck mower?
I'd go yay, if he needs it.
Anyone, anyone a nay?
My, well, my initial thought was a nay for this year, but I, I'm not, I mean, I'm not.
Does removing the playground and focusing on grant funding help sway you the other way?
Your playground, where's that at on the side?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the bathroom, yeah.
Well, I, I, I mean, I guess, I don't know, it'd almost be easier to just come up with it, how much, what dollar value do we wanna do? I, I mean, I, I get them all, like. Like the, the, the General's Field restoration, I wouldn't pull that out. I mean, his one, two, I mean, his top four, I'm good with.
Your indoor shooting range flooring, where was that at, was that?
We didn't get to that, I had put that, I only did that at.
Which one is the bottom one?
Eleven. It might have to prioritize all these. It really would be nice to do both these at the same time, and one of the reasons I say that is like, uh, we have, the council graciously supported replacing the carpet in the rec center. When we're doing that, we're gonna paint walls, and we're gonna clean it up, and we're gonna do other things to make that whole project really bang. I would love to see us do the shooting barrier and the flooring as the same project, and it's like, wow.
More big project.
New indoor shooting range, this is great. Whereas if you do barriers, like, eh, that's pretty cool, and the next year, eh, that's pretty, you know, I mean, just.
It's never fun to remodel and then have to patch, patch a remodel, right? It's never fun to do that.
Yeah, I almost wished I would have presented those both in this, together, but I felt that the, the barriers were so important, I wanted to separate them so that there was two smaller amounts instead of one larger amount.
How does the council feel about us taking the one hundred and fifty-five out with the proviso that it comes back to us as a grant application? And then we'll have to put some money back in to, for matching, to make it, you know, be good, and then, um, try to get Bolton Park and stuff too.
Are we wanting to go for two for one at that point, is that?
Yeah. And then next year, go back after the third, but.
Yeah, push it as hard as it can be pushed.
Three, yeah, why not?
And they're.
I mean, they're generous.
There, we could get a foundational sponsor as well, too, you never know. I mean, that's kinda loose going.
I mean, I guess, like, which of these would we pull out? I mean, everybody's all in favor of supporting it all, what do, what do you pull out? Because that's.
Yeah.
Let me do my last two.
I, 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 my personal opinion is I think we could hold off on that deck mower this year, if we could put in both the, the shooting range barriers and the flooring to make it one complete hill.
Seems to be that if we get the grant, we get that grant within restaurants, what little we have left over, we can get that more.
What's the bottom line without these two?
Three forty-four, I think.
Without.
I'm not sure what's all in there then.
Yeah, three forty-four is everything except for the two red.
Even the orange?
Yeah, yeah, includes the orange, right?
Why don't we, why don't we find them all except for the two? It's a rare, it's a drug.
So that's, so we'd be at three forty-four minus the two reds.
Can, oh my God, can I get out in the weeds for just ten seconds, my friend? What if we held off on the weight room improvements with the idea that there are already three independent gyms here, I'm not saying I'm against this, I went to the rec center, I'm just wondering, what if we looked at the idea of taking that money and that thing and turned it into something different? Maybe the weight room isn't the best idea for the rec center, right? I mean, you're looking at, is it seventy-five thousand dollars? Maybe we could do something, a different program, or something funner than the weight room, so I guess, I'm just saying out loud, I would pull the weight room improvements out. And I would go, I would take that money and put it into the shooting range, because that's an extremely highly-used thing. While I'm not against the weight room, maybe this is a good time to evaluate.
Well, here's where I think of, I'm sorry, okay, no, Chris again, um, the weight room equipment is it's not in the proper sequences, it's old equipment that was given to us, you're redoing that room, why is the old junk in there when you're?
Well, but that's my argument, maybe we shouldn't even have a weight room. I mean, there's three gyms in town, that makes four.
To me, because we had a weight room to start, and that was very.
I, I wanna, I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, right? But, uh, we have to look at other asset, aspects of this too, with the weight room and stuff, uh, there's certain companies that give, that, that buy memberships, right, for their employees. For example, UP, right, Union Pacific Railroad, pays for a daily use of a rec center, right, so, so they don't just go to a private gym and just pay for, you have to go through a lot of hassle to get the railroad to pay for that. So you would just go to the rec center, because it's already done, so that would be, you know, losing out on a lot, on some of them people too, and it's a paid-on a daily. That's just one example, right, so I think that's a necessity.
And I, I just, I don't know anymore, I have a question.
One vision we have, and this is talking to all the staff in the Parks and Recreation Department, is that almost in a way, rebranding the rec center and making it the place to be and the place to go, and that one-stop shop for all your recreation needs, that's where you go. And I mean, we even talked with city hall to bring, when you wanna, when you wanna, um, reserve a pavilion or a park or something like that, you come to the rec center to do that. And so, membership is important, because that's revenue. And we love the idea, like my wife and son, they're gonna be here at the end of the month, and the same thing we used to do in our gym at home before COVID and it closed, is we went to a gym that had racquetball courts, my wife liked to do her machines and do this, my son would, I, would do a few, but we'd go play racquetball. And I, I love that about this rec center, because every bu- person in the family has something to do, and I just, I feel like that weight room is part of that. And I understand what you're saying about other businesses, and I don't believe the city's intent is to compete with.
No, 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 I don't think it, I don't even think that's the conversation.
Makes it not.
No, I don't, I don't think that's the issue at all.
Yeah.
So here, here, I, I'm just, this is my thoughts, I would pull the, I would pull the weight room out, and I would leave everything else. And then I would say to you, follow back with the rec center, show me those memberships, show me who's using it, prove to me that that seventy-five thousand dollar investment will go over enough people, more than five UP guys that half-heartedly go in. I'm being, I'm, I'm exaggerating that, I'm not, I, I realize that's not a fair way to say it, but, but if, if you come back and show the, prove that support, right, you've got membership, you've got dollars, you can show what that's being done, and let's look at what it, let's look at what's really happening. But in that, my personal opinion, I would just pull that up for now, and I would, I'm good with the rest of that. I think that's, that's all wonderful. And the bathroom would, I would leave it up for hopefully a grant or something like that.
Yeah, I would really like to fight for the seventy-five dollar thousand for the rec room, because of the very point that Chris made. Uh, we have a turnaround coming in, fifteen hundred people. And they did come to the City of Rawlins in previous years and buy rec memberships for their families and, uh, their employees and stuff, because there wasn't a lot. That, well, they didn't think there was a lot to do, so they provided it to them, and it's extra revenue for the, the rec center, so I, I'm, I'd like to leave it in.
One thing I would add is that the feedback we do get is that is, that is the one I saw to the rec center. And, and I think we would have to do something, you know, I mean, I, I, I like your idea of considering other uses for that space. We already have a kind of a open space dance kind of area, the same size, you know, we already have the spinning and all that other type of equipment. But I think we would have to invest in something to make it, make it safer. Because right now, it's just cluttered and not, it's, I think something's been done, whether we spend the seventy-five thousand or not. Uh, I just don't know what that would cost.
I'd, I'd like to add this to it also, and this comes from a, a parent of a teenage kid, okay? You're allowed to, to use a, a rec center weight room at like fifteen, I believe, okay? Where I can't just go purchase a membership for a, a gym, personal gym membership for my fifteen-year-old kid, because I, I, I'm not saying it's as a babysitting aspect of things, but without me being there, right? And I'm not into lifting weights and stuff like that, right, you know, in, in this age, I am right now. You know, so.
Isn't there an age limit?
There's, there's.
At the rec?
That's what I just said, it's like fifteen, right? I believe is what it is, because my son accesses a weight room there at this time, so I, I mean, for the young youth, right, also, that I think it's a necessity.
No, I, I guess I would still like, I usually just like to see the numbers, right? I mean, I get it, I use the rec center, I paid the membership, I, I went there, I, I did it all.
No, I understand.
But I still question, I mean, I've seen a lot of times where it's, it's hard.
I understand that, Aaron, but I, if we're gonna freshen it up, let's just get it done. Period. And then I'm worried about how to get the bathrooms, because those are crucial somehow, but if we can get some grants, or if we have extra revenue, we can put it back in the budget by amendment or something. But I think that's really.
Just fix it all. Just start with a whole new year, all brand-new equipment. Hey, look at us, professionals, staff, I like it. I, I mean.
So, we could.
And there's other options.
Anybody else have?
There's other options of that too, that, that could, could go into play with a rec board, you know, it's not like we're just stuck on asking the rec board for a grant for bathrooms, I mean, there's other options there that could reduce all this too in the future.
Yeah, that's a good point, and going forward, I mean, it's kind of a tough one, but just because we put something in and the council, um, approves it, doesn't mean we're gonna still looking at other ways of getting funding to help these capital items, or other ways to cut the costs down, or other ways that staff can help install and do some things to bring these costs down. But without knowing, and if it's an important project, we just have to go and put it in as a capital item. But we're always gonna look ways to try to save money on those.
Seems like we could play it by ear, uh, as I say, you know, it's come back.
I mean, we just keep asking the same.
If you get a grant that's gonna knock down some of these numbers.
Are you good with all the yellow?
Yeah. I'm gonna budge it to read this.
Are you good with all the yellow, Chris?
It's gonna go somewhere else.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Devari?
One sec.
Are you good with all the yellow?
I am.
I am too.
I think we got it.
Mr. Mayor? Okay, well, then, there we go, just end that right there.
Awesome, move on.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so, um, we are now on to the water fund, and I know Danielle can cruise us through pretty, pretty quickly.
I, I, I gotta go, man, I don't, I, I gotta get my pills, I, I, I mean, I knew this was gonna be late, but I didn't expect ten thirty.
How close we're done, are we?
We have water, sewer, landfill.
Right, yeah.
Recycle.
Recycle.
Shall we just go to the capital list on those?
Uh, there's not much of a capital list, so.
Yeah, because there, in these things, um, Danielle, they're pretty much status quo, or aren't they, in their enterprise funds?
Yes.
Well, I think it's an accounting issue, it's not your fault, it was, but it wasn't that way in September. Um, but anyway, yeah, if we could just, anything new in the water fund? No.
Eighty-five thousand. It's up to, it's up to all of you if you wanna keep track of your, or we could schedule another.
I mean, we can keep going, I, I can kick it back on Facebook here a little bit, and that's fine, but I, I, I have, I.
Do you have any heartburn with Anthony?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
And Erin, we could call you in also.
Yeah.
Well, I can.
I mean, because I don't know how great.
Because we, because Daniel's not gonna be here, and next week, I'm not gonna be able to be as available as I am this week, but we've gotta get the budget going, because of state law. So, and I'm, I'm willing to spend my time.
We also have, you know, in two months, we'll have our first reading, so it's not like, if we, you know, if you came across something, we can still, we can still change too.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, this is.
I want you to know, your opinion is important to.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any, gonna be any major heartburns, I don't.
Okay.
Just cooperate.
So, Danielle, do you wanna, um, move us along?
So, water fund, there, most of it's decreases, the only increase is five thousand dollars in hydrants, and it's just the inflation cost of purchasing hydrants. And we do try to do some routine maintenance and replacement there. Do you guys have any specific questions?
It's pretty standard for me.
Water treatment? Water treatment, um, again, there's not really much change. There's a two thousand dollar increase in facilities maintenance and that's for non-capital heater needs. Um, otherwise the rest are just decreases or things to.
One question, we have that colossal accident out there, we'll call it that. Uh, where did our money come from to repair all that stuff, is that?
Um, I would defer to Jodi on that.
So we took it on water improvement, but.
Oh, for.
For the water treat, or water sewage fund.
Yeah, so that's just drawing from our, that's what's putting us in, one of the reasons it's putting us in the negative on the fund balance.
I understand.
And, and I'm, I'm trying to find out if we're kind of into LGLP or not.
Well, LGLP doesn't cover, cover buildings, they'll have to go to the other insurance. Uh, only if there's, um, well, I don't think, if it was an employee that did something wrong, maybe then they would look at it. Put it in, ask them, let them tell you.
So, so my question then is, that put us in the negative, so a couple, another year we can come out and be back in a positive at this, uh, this way if, I mean theoretically.
Depends on what we do to in- increase our.
The way we covered it the last time, Jody, we went and got a loan. We also got reimbursement on the insurance through, it was for lightning. So it wasn't our LGLP, but it was our act of insurance. And it was an act of God, so we got reimbursed at least a hundred and some thousand. So, um, that's how we handled it the last time. And I don't know how those, uh, uh, state land investments, I mean, call it state lands, it's differently named. Uh, State Land Investment Board gave us that loan, I don't know how we put it through that account because it was a loan. So I think we paid out that account, is how we handled that.
I think the major thing that we need to do is across the board for the enterprises, look at their fees. Because they are supposed to be self-sustaining and without any help from the, um, general fund. So I think that is paramount going into this mixture.
Okay, so now, and I really, I know that we told two years ago that we needed to be watching this. And I think we had an act of God going on, we can't help that. But we do have to begrudgingly look at our, our funds because we were told two years ago to be watching this. We didn't anticipate any big, large problems. So, but I, I don't like the feeling that we went and went for it and told them because I don't feel if we were, but. But maybe with the, what we had to put out on the sewer treatment plan it is, and so we have to face that.
That's what I'm asking, that put us in, so with what's going on now, obviously, I know we need look for the future and into the future and stuff to, to help sustain that. But if that put us in theoretically, we could build out at what we're going, what, what rate we're at now. If, if nothing happens again.
So, we're gonna have to fix it no matter what we wanna do.
Yeah, and at, at what pace do we wanna get ourselves back in a good position? It's kind of what it, kind of what it comes down to.
But can we pass a budget with, with that deficit?
Technically, no.
I don't think so.
It has to be balanced. Now, we can loan them money, but they have to pay it back. A lot of times they'll just say, oh, well, you can take your time and pay it back maybe in ten years and then eventually they forget the loan. Well, no, that's not prudent. And so we can help them through from the general fund, yes, we do have some money there, but it's a really poor way to, to run it. They need to be run and I know people don't like the increase in utility rates, but that's life. And so the, the best thing to do is do it incrementally, which is like three percent or so a year, is what I have worked with. So you don't get that fifteen percent major increase that can be harmful. So you do the three percent, which really amounts to very, very little per household. And it's very affordable to do that. But not only do you have the plan for the repairs and maintenance of today, you have to prepare for replacement and bigger things and more regulations coming down the pipe. So it's not just to cover inflation, you have to build enough into that fee structure to pay for future. And if you don't do that, you're just digging yourself in a deeper hole. And that's just the reality of it.
Okay, so now, I, I mean, what I'm trying to really get down to the bottom is, do we have to do these increases before we pass the final budget?
No. We will, at the, the, the worst case scenario is the general fund will loan them money. But remember, if we have to out subsidize them, we only have ten percent or they will lose that enterprise status. And that, that's for gas fee and, and stuff. So those are the rules.
Wow.
So we ultimately have to loan them the one point six or.
If we just get reimbursed. Updated amounts actually too, that, um, on your new worksheet, so we went through.
Switch to the new worksheet.
They are a little better. We did, they're, they're not a white as gold.
Don't, don't worry. Okay, so what, what page are we on?
Um, so that if you look at the second page of the new package.
Oh, it's only the enterprise one.
Because this is just enterprise, yes.
Okay, so.
Well, and the other small. Bottom right number, it's five seventy.
That's at the very end.
Very bottom one, okay, so we would only have to loan the five hundred seventy, through just the water, yeah. So we'd only have to loan out of the general fund the five hundred seventy-three thousand.
Which is better than the one point.
Yeah, that's what I was like, one point?
Okay.
Still not good, but it's better.
But that's over ten percent, right?
Well, what I would, instead of subsidizing them, I would loan them and they have to pay that loan back. So in other words, we would get it to zero. And we would also have to charge a reasonable interest rate on that. Because it, it has to be treated as unsanely, basically.
But that, that has to be loaned and balanced to zero before passing a budget.
Yes.
So that's gotta come out of that general. No, well, yeah, that would be.
We have the money in general.
So that makes our capital project, project list, I think fairly easy. What I will tell you guys, um, is I think we absolutely have to move this project forward, um, which is the hundred and fifty and then cut everything else.
I'm sorry, what project?
The springs project.
Got the plan being carried over?
The, um, no, the springs collection rehab for the, to get going on the engineering so that we can move forward with MRG and WWCD grant money, um, to do that spring. Because we have, I mean, we are critical with the Wood State Pipeline that we have. So I would say that is the one capital project that we would need to figure out how to find.
Springs, okay.
Danielle, the, the leak in radio detection could save us money too, right? Because of less overtime and.
It could absolutely, um.
So Jody, if we, anything on this list that we have proven the water, it would add to the, the deficit that we have and so we'd have to loan our money?
Correct.
Yeah. But we really need, we, we need to look at our fees, that's, that's what we need to do.
Then, and we're rebuilding, we're building, I thought that was in the six penny.
It is, yes.
So that's, that would be on your list for food?
Uh, that's just showing you the water and sewer portions of it, it is six penny funded though.
So we don't have to take it out of our enterprise fund, thank you.
So, so just so from my understanding of this, um, a capital project for the enterprise funds comes out of enterprise funds? So how, what's the proposed way to, if, if we already have a five hundred plus thousand dollar deficit and we need to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Is there, do you have to loan the six hundred and fifty thousand pretty much or seven hundred thousand?
Well, some of this is coming from the sixth penny and the capital, right?
No, 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 just, just the springs rehab.
Just the current?
Just the springs rehab is what I'm saying.
Well, let me ask you this question with the, and Amy might be able to answer this one, is we are expecting two million dollars plus. It, it's in excess of two million when the, the two thousand nineteen bonding went through. So they've been holding that, that two million plus, right? So for, of our sales tax.
My son's six penny. It is six penny.
That's different.
Yeah, you can.
But that, that has to be used for specific purposes.
But can't that be used for some of these?
No.
It cannot.
Whatever was on the ballot.
Yeah.
You have to describe exact projects and then once it's voted in, the money has to be spent on that and only that.
Yeah, yeah, and the other thing is, so, Jody, I mean, impact.
No, no, I don't.
Part of that was, uh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Landfills out south, part of that impact money might be available to some of these things that they're on that area where the, that they might use some of those. And I know that's Amy about that, but I'm pretty sure that we could dig into that, the impact funds. We've got two million sitting around.
So, uh, it's regulated by statute, it has to go directly to an unmitigated impact. Um, it's a little complex in that the city went with a formula-based, um, scenario versus a project based. Unfortunately, with the exception of choke cherry, those projects, um, let's just leave it at, um, they have to be spent on unmitigated impacts.
Could you give us a list of exactly what we can spend it for? Because I, I keep throwing this around, I know we can massage that in some way. Um, and it was, it covered a wide variety of things, including police and it was a formula that we used, but we should be able to use some of this stuff, particularly if it's in the area where choke cherry is and some of those things. But I want us to be legal about it, but I also want to, we need to spend some of that money or we're gonna just be sitting there forever. But anyway, could you do that, Amy, for us so I know, so I'm not making assertions?
There are, there are a lot of things that can be paid for with that impact funding, but you can't like, you have to associate it to the impact that the wind farm's bringing. So you could pay for extra police officers, you could probably pay, this, and I'm no lawyer, so I'm not trying to trump anybody here, but my experience with that was, um, because I helped get that impact funding going, was to pay for things like, um, you know, extra police, uh, wear and tear on our parks. Where, where, any place these people come in and use and, and use up, um, rec center, uh, some of the equipment, if, if we can prove they were in there using the equipment and wearing it out, we can use some of it for that, streets, you know, these extra people that come in, uh, causing the impact, well, in so many ways, and it is, it's not, it's not real restrictive, ever, you know.
Putting, putting larger load on our water system.
That's, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, could we?
Yeah.
We could use it for water funding then because it's extra.
What's that, DeBary?
That's what we're talking about right now, water.
Right.
So rather than saying we're gonna have to raise, uh, the water rates a dollar or a dollar fifty right now, we could use some of those funds.
Well.
Well, yeah.
That's a Band-Aid on a gunshot wound, but.
It is.
I would still like to know legally if we can do it.
Yeah, sure.
I, I think it's just to get the, back to zero ultimately or fund this, you know, help fund this, which will.
Well, what it does, what it does is it allows us a little bit of time to discuss how much we have to raise the water to make our, our water system solid. So that's just giving us some time. And you're right, it's just a Band-Aid, but I think that's the way to go because we should have already been discussing, uh, water and, and landfill fees and all this prior to the budget. But we, that's how we did it before, we discussed those things and made decisions based on the, what we stood on, these utilities. And then we did our budget. We, we're doing it now and then we're saying, well, we're gonna be short, so we need to raise, we need to figure out how to raise the, the water rates. Well, we don't know.
But, uh, just clarification for me, am I misunderstanding that what that impact fees were supposed to have been used for should have happened back in two thousand nineteen? Am I missing something?
Uh, we got it back then, but we had, I mean, it just sat there. But I do believe we would, some of that's been allocated out, two hundred thousand and then eight hundred thousand. I have no idea what streets or why, but I think part of that was engineering. That was that one point two million, it's not the other ones that we got. So I want, I need you to research that to see what it's tied to, because if, if.
We've been trying to look at that.
So I would, I would just caution, um, everyone, so each one of those impact assistance projects is separate and the intent is for it to be pre-project mitigation and during the construction. So at the end of the project, those amounts should have been expended because the workers are no longer in our hotels, they're no longer using our services. So that becomes a little bit more tricky with the formula-based impact assistance because you're now spending money after the impacts have gone and that's where we're at.
And, and I'm, this is a really obscure thing, but if we don't use them impact funds and the Fed, and the state finds out about it, they're not gonna give us impact funds because we're proving we don't need it or it wouldn't be in a savings account.
So Jody, can't, or not Jody, but Amy, can we reimburse some of those expenses that happened this year? Or we, because we had turnaround people coming and stuff, but.
Yes, so, um, I've worked with staff, staff has pulled all of those project binders. They were going to work on a project schedule and identify with each project when it began and when it concluded. So you had a date and then if there was any pre-construction included in that application, then those, you had the entire, uh, schedule. But it's project specific, so everything you get from choke cherry has to relate to that project when it began and when it ended. It hasn't ended, so choke cherry is still coming in. But all of the other wind projects have, have started and they've concluded. So any potential mitigation, um, would have been experienced before that. But we are working on that, um, and staff will provide you with those project dates so that you can better assess which, um, out of the unmitigated costs, which ones would apply to each project and how much is available.
Okay, that'll help us clarify.
As soon as we finish up with the budget here, and that's gonna be.
Yeah, obviously, we're gonna just ask you to do it right now.
This is gonna be a very important focus that we work on this and this is why I already sent that email to Cho- Cho- Cho Cat to get the timeline so that we can go back and identify, okay, we have more workers here. So let's look at the projects we expended and see if, let's tie it together and, and get those spent.
So there's nothing in this budget that we can use upcoming impact funds for then? Is that correct or am I?
Well, upcoming impact funds could pay for streets, sewer improvements, water improvements. I'm trying to think of all the things the workers would come here and use or, or take advantage of. All of those things can be paid for with that impact assistance.
Tell me how to follow.
No.
Yeah, let's look at that too.
But it could, it could be used for, say, that, that the engineering of that, right?
Um, it depends on if they're the ones that tore up that road, yeah.
Oh, okay.
You know, if it's a road they constantly use or something to that effect, yes, all the associated costs could go. But you, you have to hook it, like Amy said, it has to be.
Hook directly to that.
Yeah, if no one with that project came and flew in, you can't spend money on the airport. You know, it, it has to be on things that they came here and used.
Like that rec center, all that, a lot of that.
Lot of rec center equipment.
Street.
Extra cops, maybe, maybe even the, the extra code enforcement officer could come out of there, maybe.
There's a bathroom right there, right?
You know, there's just certain things that if you can attribute it to those extra people being here, raising our expenses, that's what we could pay for.
We can always amend the budget here maybe too, as we figure that stuff out. Um, Dan, yeah, Danielle, tell us what you need out of this absolute bottom line that you cannot do without.
The springs collection rehab.
And that is.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
I don't wanna be the negative nanny, but I'll split off and say, I don't see, I understand it, it's a must, but I don't see how when you're already the
One five four.
The five hundred seventy-three thousand, uh, in the whole, if you can fund a hundred fifty thousand.
Well, we, yeah, but we got it, that's protecting our, that's protecting our water.
Yeah, we.
We can't do, without water, we're screwed.
So, I, I get that, but how do we fund that, do we have to loan, we have to loan that money to, to come to a zero?
But they don't have to pay it back right away.
Yeah, see, we can borrow it for the, put it in a schedule somehow to pay it back so much a year over ten, fifteen, twenty years, and then next year we can pay it off if we want to.
So, so at that, then, I, I get it, it has to be done, right?
Right.
But now we're looking at being eight hundred thousand close to borrowing, that, that we lend them from the general fund, eight hundred thousand.
From the general fund? I would probably lend them a million so that they have a little wiggle room there, and, but it's something that you, you can't not do.
Yeah, we can't.
Doesn't that, doesn't that tie into, uh, raising the water rate?
That's part of it.
Now, that's, that's, that's something that, that we might have to do, so we borrow some money to pay it, but then we, we talk about how much we have to, how much revenue we have to get from that water to pay that back.
Right.
Yeah, it's, yes.
And, and I don't mind, I don't even mind talking about that, I just don't have problems guessing at it. Okay, we need a dollar.
We'll, we'll do, we'll do the research on it.
No, no, that's. No, 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 no.
I need to know, I need to know that if we're gonna borrow, uh, a thou- uh, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna figure out how much that's gonna be in water rates.
It's a. And we will, we will get there, that, that was just a pure example, that, that's not reality.
And DeBary. DeBary, um, that information was presented by past staff, um, Kelly's been gracious enough to provide me her copies of information, and it does provide formulas at that time which we can use to tweak, to get that information to you sooner. I, I do believe that you having a fee review is important and it should be tied closely to the budget, so that is something that, um, you need to do in conjunction with this, absolutely.
So, so, and I don't want, I mean, sometimes you have to face the public, and I understand that, but I wanna make sure that when we're doing those numbers and we're right on the money, that we're not adding an extra, a few more dollars onto the water bill, just to, just to add it.
I know, I would never do that, because I'm paying that too, that burden is on me.
Well, and inflation takes place, I mean, there's nothing you can buy today that was, uh, that's cheaper today than it was two years ago or three years ago, everything goes up, so, so, the problem is, we haven't raised the water for the length of time, so now here comes a chunk, so we're just gonna have to be cognizant of that every two, three years, look at it, and if we have to raise it a dime or a nickel or a dollar, well, that's what we gotta do, but it's just been too long, and now we're in debt.
And I, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that it was like ten years ago, when we, when, when we raised the water.
It's been a long time, D.
It was two thousand thirteen that we lost the judgment, two thousand thirteen, at the time, when it was twenty ten.
When was it? When we raised, the last time we raised it, right?
So.
Eight years. So, so, so what we fell behind is, is that we stopped having these meetings to disc, we're supposed to do this, Corey, I think you have an ordinance that says we're supposed to meet every once a year to discuss our enterprise funds, to see where we're at, and we, we skipped a couple.
Well, it's an uncomfortable conversation, nobody wants to have it, I don't wanna raise anybody's water bills, but guess what, I think we're gonna.
I think we're gonna have to.
And I, I don't, I think the people out there should expect it, I mean, twenty thirteen, you could buy a brand new truck for twenty-two thousand dollars, now they're fifty-two thousand for the same truck, your water's gonna be a little more.
I don't have a problem with that, providing we're, we're showing the public that.
Where it came from.
All that water is, is being paid for right now.
Yeah, trust me, Dee, when we get done, we're gonna have all that, we're gonna be right here where we're gonna have, and you're gonna present it to us.
Right.
Could I go back to the water fund distributions, there's carryover, that needs to stay over, in there, doesn't it, Daniel?
Um.
Cause you've already got that going on.
So the carry forward, it's highlighted, the nine hundred ninety, that's an awarded grant, um, and that, that's up above already, and that's right there, so that, we are committed, we're almost hopefully done with that project, so that.
Okay. Oh, it doesn't say nine hundred there for us, but.
Where's that at?
But that's in your top, that's part of it done for already, yeah.
It's just a low.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Now then, the water meters, the upgrades and replacement, two hundred grand, you need that?
I, I mean, the only thing, if you guys can do the springs, I know even that's gonna be a difficult ask since I'm already negative, I mean, obviously, there's other things that all of these things are a priority, but I'm not gonna sit here and try to justify adding another eight hundred thousand to our negative balance, so.
Yeah, okay, so two hundred thousand would be upgrade of all the meters, we have all the meters, but we can do that next year.
It's, we, right, we would push it, cause it's only twenty percent, that's a five-year plan.
If we have the money. Okay.
Um, this, truly, the springs is the very extremely critical thing, if that line breaks, we do not have water to roll in, so.
Now, is Edinburgh and Walnut or?
That's six penny.
Six penny. Okay, the ditch bucket, you, that's.
Where's the water at?
That's peanut.
Ouch. Your leak detection, what about that, is that?
I, again, would love to have that, that would save us money in overtime, that would help with water breaks, which, I mean, potentially could help us save some money, I think, on a lot of different things, but, again, I know I'm asking.
Okay. Um, then, the one ton truck, can we do without that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, engineering design, where we, that is already undergoing or ongoing?
No, that would be for future projects, and we can push that.
Future, so we can out it, okay. Now, springs absolutely is hundred fifty thousand, that you say is critical?
Yes.
Okay, the feeder line and to roll ends, that's.
That should actually be fifty thousand, um, and that can go to next year.
Put that to next year, okay, there's, um, water meters at springs on plant.
Right below the yellow.
We do kinda need those too, but.
Oh. The water meter at the springs in the plant. It's ten grand. What the pur- what is the purpose, it goes to meeting or cut down on?
Uh, so this, we have to meter what goes out of the plant, we have to record and track that. Um, the springs, because we're working on trying to get them rehabbed, we wanna see what, we need some historical, what we're pulling now, and we wanna be able to compare what we're pulling in the future once we're able to move forward, and, because we are anticipating with the work of the springs project, we being able to increase our production quite a bit.
So.
Is that something we need right now, or?
Um, I, I need one of those, but if this isn't approved, I'm gonna try to make it work within operating.
Okay.
I need the one at the plant.
Pretreatment plant, what's the deal with that?
Um, we need to do, we've been kind of robbing parts from that, but that can be pushed to next year as well.
Is that the SCADA system?
Uh, no, that's our pretreatment, when we pull from the river and we usually run that just short term, when we're able to pull spring water, it doesn't need the pretreatment, so.
Okay, so we can do, we, that's next year, new truck with trade-in, can we get by without it?
Yes.
Okay. Air compressors, doesn't that go to needing that at the solar treatment?
We do need air compressors, this is actually at the water plant.
Water plant. Okay, what I propose.
And the tape painting can go.
What I propose is that we do the, um, the springs collection is number one.
And air compressors.
Um, the air compressors number two. And let's get in there then, we have to leave the dis.
What about three meters?
I think I can take the one out of operating, if we are doing a third one, I would say to do the leak and radio detection, because I think we're gonna earn our money back on that one. Probably, this been.
That's thirty thousand dollars, is it?
Couple months.
I have a question about the meters, real quick, I had the impression from then when you presented to the council that there was a meter that you guys installed as a trial and it was way more accurate, and so you ended up having a, a larger bill, if we installed those everywhere, would that offset some of what we're?
So the manufacturers, they, they say that those meters will read ten to fifteen percent better, they're actually reading above thirty percent better. So yes, absolutely, however, it is a large expense that will, um, and it'll be a five-year project, it'll be two hundred thousand, twenty percent of the city, so with the co- position we're in right now, I think we have, it's, yes, it does make money, but I think we have to push that out a year.
Yeah.
Just because of that, otherwise, yes, that absolutely is a moneymaker.
And the water.
Yeah.
Dan, um, so, okay, how much is the water needed at the spring and plant, I can't see on my thing.
Ten thousand for me, right?
Yeah.
I think that's something we should put in there too.
And she says she could work that through the operation budget very easily.
I do feel like I can work that through the operating budget, yeah.
Do you need us to approve it here, and then you take it out of there, or?
Um, no, I think, um, if we, if you leave it, then we will.
And I'm gonna get a thirty.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I understand that, so that's my proposal, guys, of those.
Those two?
Air compressor.
No, I, I had three on here, uh, the springs collection.
Right. Yeah.
Um, the leak and radio detection, cause that's keeping money in our hands, and then the air compressors, I can get a real. And then she's gonna get the ten grand out of some other place for the water meters, cause I think that's important then. Cause it's a sa- it's a savings, water savings deal. Pardon?
What the problem is, is that with the enterprise ones, they, they're, they're just, they're, Tom has to get one, I mean, yeah, but it has to be.
Does that make sense, Carol?
Right. Yes.
Okay, and you, are, are you guys all kinda thinking the same way here?
Yeah, what?
Okay, this is what we want.
Okay, should we move on to the next one?
Right, so, um, sewer, really, same thing, utilities, there's not, uh, there's some decreases, there's an increase in um, materials, and this is just, the cost of things continue to go up, um, we're required to better pipe, things like that, I mean, it's only twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, wa- wastewater treatment, we have a, uh, we did put a five thousand dollar request in facilities, and this was solely because we've obviously been down for a little bit, um, and we just, as we get running, wanted to make sure we had a little bit of extra budget there in case we had some weird thing come up from just not having our facilities operating like normal, um, so potentially, we may not need that, and it's literally just kind of a cushion for us. Um, otherwise, that's the only change there, do you guys have specific questions for the operating at all?
Monster, munch, 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 I can't remember what they call it.
Muffin monster.
Munch, muffin monster, is it working?
Uh, it is, but it's pulled right now, because we have that new, um, helicid that pulls all of that out, and we don't need that.
So they don't need that anymore.
Yeah, but it is there.
Is it a backup or something?
Yeah, well, we, we have the tube right now, so.
Okay, so we're kinda, we're on board to be operational?
Um, I'm hoping by the end of this month, we'll be back up.
Thank you.
Um, so, this one, we had some changes as well, uh, again, still negative, but not as much, it's negative the four hundred nineteen thousand nine oh six. Um, like, you can see our request, uh, we have a carry forward that's been awarded and committed that we'll have to do, and then, um, we've got the six penny projects, which is separate. Um. I won't know what I need here.
You're on base one?
I would tell you.
This is sewer, right?
This is sewer, yeah.
Sewer.
Um, the truck can wait, um, the push-in sewer camera can wait, um, catch basins can, but they're not it's not ideal, but they can, um, steam cleaner can wait.
Are the catch basins five, is that right?
Um, I think that's what it was.
So what's a portable steam cleaner?
Um, so that was going to be used to clean the hydrants, um, to do some other things, so that can wait, the SCADA needs to stay.
Okay, hold on, I'm gonna, let me get a piece of paper quick, cause I gotta draw a straight line across there, cause I think it's.
Um.
The sewer fund isn't in as bad shape as the water fund, girl?
Um, it's negative four hundred nineteen nine oh six. Um.
Yeah, they don't, yeah.
Also, just a, just a quick comment too, um, before we knew where the fund balances really were, we had plugged in a couple of positions that we wanted to add, and so we will need to pull those out, and that's gonna decrease and lower the anticipated, um, space that we're at, so that, that'll, so that's a good thing.
What were we putting in for?
Um, so we have administrative assistant, two utility system workers, and, uh, we have changed one, uh, water wastewater plant operator to four persons, that, that won't cost anything, so just those first ones.
So, so.
So three.
No, what I, what I'm trying to follow, I guess, is, is, uh, the Edinburgh rebuild is not on there, it's, it's actually underneath, I think, is what's happened. The four hundred thousand and fifty-four thousand in the budget side, they need to be moved up, because it looks like you're carrying over fifty-four thousand dollars for a three-quarter ton truck, and you're requesting another forty thousand.
That's not, yeah, I hear you correctly.
Right, yeah, so I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to, that's why when I put the straight edge across there, I'm like, that's not right here.
Yeah, we need to leave Edinburgh and Walnut in there.
Yeah, they just need to me- move up one, one column, see right there.
I see, so the truck of three-quarter ton, truck was out?
Well, well, no, I'm just saying, yeah, I'm just saying, that's what it looks like, is they're asking, they're carrying over fifty-four for a new truck, and asking for forty more, there we go. Thank you.
Okay, give me a.
Sorry, I was just like, wait a second here.
Daniel, the truck, the truck is out, you say?
Yes.
Okay, the push-in sewer cameras are, what you're saying?
Yeah, I pulled all of those up there, the SCADA, I think, needs to stay for the five thousand, um, that's our alarm system and making sure that we're maintaining and keeping that up to date, as we know is extremely critical.
Yes, it is.
Um, the pond, pond to slide gate, we can move.
Is the pond slide gate though, is that? This is what we talked about, and, and.
Is this what prevents the flood?
Prevents the flood at the water.
I don't think it is, is it?
Is this?
Um, we have a gate there, it needs, yes, it does need to be replaced, the more critical thing is that thirty-inch pump line, um, that's in the building that is, honestly, that's gonna be our next flood, it's gonna break in the building and we have no way to isolate it.
That's the one you have nine hundred on, right?
Yes.
So, should we bite the dust and put it in here?
I mean, that's, to you guys, I obviously, it's a need, but that's.
Is it that critical? You're gonna have to borrow it, but.
That sounds like a, that sounds like a must, the way you described it.
So, but, but I wanna know this, the, the pond slide gate though, is the one that was presented to say, we need to do that to deter, to prevent flood from outside again, or, or however it was, right?
It prevent, it's, contains that wastewater to the pond so that it cannot backflow into the plant.
If we would've had this?
We did have it.
So, so there's the one that goes into the plant, there's that gate, but this is the one that prevents it from going back into it, right, this is a separate gate, correct?
We have a gate, it's very old, that would be replaced there, that's the issue, we do have a gate there though.
But it's main, right, and this would be automated, right?
It is, yeah.
This would be automated, right?
Automatic, separate, on its own, just like the one off of the feeder line going into the plant.
This could have prevented some of this, correct?
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
So to me, I think that is a necessity, also, I mean.
Um, is this something we can go to the, off, on loan board over, I know they don't have a lot of funds, but some more improvements out of the wastewater?
Go to which?
Investment board.
Oh, SLIP?
Hmm.
When is their next, that SLIP allocation, that?
Probably, so, uh, next spring.
Oh, okay.
We could do that, but I think, you know, this is the second time around out there, guys, and I don't wanna take any more chances.
Yeah, we could try.
And I know a lot of it has to do with that, that alarm system and all that stuff, we don't want into it, but anyway, I think, we can't afford any more disasters.
I, I think that's why I'm, I'm asking the questions of if that, cause I, I believe that's a necessity at the same time too, cause that. Cause that prevent, could have prevented. More of the flood that occurred than, you know what I mean?
And so I'm willing to borrow from the, the account to cover Jody and pay it back, if we're gonna have to look in at sewer rates, so.
Yeah, cause water and sewer go hand in hand.
Yeah, mm-hmm. So I think if we could, um, I mean, we're just gonna have to bite the bullet and do it and don't like doing it, but yeah, gotta do it.
The, we?
Amount of, the amount of repairs that we're gonna have to pay for that, is that included in here, or is that given?
It's in the expenditures of the current year, budget year to date.
Okay.
That's where that falls.
Do you, do you have an estimated amount of what it costs?
And.
Danielle has a chart on that.
I think that, uh, so.
I'm gonna send you guys an update tomorrow, um, that I can tell you what we've spent to date. And if you want a very detailed list, I can send that as well. Um, but that is, right, I've been tracking it, I just, I did send it to Sean first because I wanted him to be able to look at it before I send it to you guys, so.
That's fine. I just wanna know what the damage was ultimately, what, what we incurred, what it, what it took to do it also is, is a big hustle deal too.
Right. Yeah, and I've been very closely tracking all of.
And I would, I would say that all of those expenses, except for what we've already expended, but I don't think there are any others.
Thank you. I just.
But that whole wall of wax up there, it should be, we can at least try. And be more than a hundred thousand, whatever, biggest pumps and, you know, whatever we had to replace up.
So what are we looking at, the five, the sixteen, hundred?
Well, there should be some water, um, I'm not, it's not conservation water funds, but there should be some stuff coming in on that, Jody.
Does the USDA have any?
They do have facility, FHA facility loans and or grants, depends on population, that kind of thing. That's my old information, so I don't know what they do as of today, but yeah, there's capital facilities, man, everything.
What's the, uh, cost of just the highlighted yellows?
Four, four, five.
Minus the carryover, sorry, sorry.
On the carryover, we'd have to include.
Okay, okay, so include that.
Four hundred forty-five thousand.
Four forty-five plus the four nineteen?
Uh, to- total of, um, four hundred forty-five thousand for all the yellow that you see.
All the yellow plus the negative.
Yes. Plus, yeah, it's four nineteen nine oh six.
Yep.
And the pipeline replacement can. Wait, or is it critical?
The, I think it's critical. I, if that thing breaks, we will flood and we will have no way to isolate that line.
That's three thousand?
Sounds the hundred.
That's the hundred.
Built like this?
Well, you know what, you gotta take care of your water.
Yeah, we, we do.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I mean, it just baffles me that something could've been built where you got no right, no way to isolate, you know, we're getting in.
Chris, yeah, that was built thirty-seven years ago and they didn't think of these things. It wasn't part of their. And I blame it on that because it's just an old plant that we rejuvenated by accidents a few years ago. But anyway, but this stuff wasn't even, we had professionals coming to look at it, not to belabor it, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not trying to, to s-.
Yeah.
Say that's not the case, but, I mean, when you've worked in, in. That, the, any kind of energy industry that's involved in, in isolations and stuff, that's always been the case, you know, for years and years.
Yeah, well, you know, we hired the best engineers, we need to hire several times. And, you know, some days, this stuff just happens. But anyway, moving along, if that's critical, just tell us. Because if we're gonna borrow one hundred thousand, we might have brought two hundred.
What about these last four, Danielle?
Um, I, the, I would say the only, the skid steer, we don't currently have an operational one, but, um, we actually, I met with staff today and they're gonna work on trying to get one of them going. Um, and then we do have one in utilities that they can use to draw grit, which they have to have it for grit, which they do in the summer twice a week, but I, we're trying to find some solutions because we assume that we will not get funded.
Could always rent, I mean, that is, at least we have the cap, like, so.
Yeah, and I think we've got some good solutions to get us through because, like I said, we were anticipating not being funded on that.
Yeah, we could do that, couldn't we, Daryl? I, I agree with Daryl, if, if we can rent it when you need it, stuff, that's good.
Now.
But it might be pretty pricey, but.
The compressor for the aeration bombs?
Uh, we have currently working compressors, we can push that out.
Okay.
Those, include, here it's.
Yes.
Okay. Should we go to the landfill?
So just the three was pretty much?
So what'd we fund you?
It's, uh, correct here, four hundred forty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Are, we are committed on the manhole replacement, Danielle? Are we?
Yeah.
Um, it's been awarded.
Okay, so we're, we're committed.
So we're, that one's definitely in.
Yep.
And then the catch basin, right?
No, that one's pulled.
And, that one, you pulled that one, okay, then you, skada was in, pond slide, and was anything else?
Skada. A thirty-inch pump.
Thirty-inch pump, okay.
Yep.
Pump valves, oh yeah, okay.
So, four, so four total.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for bearing with us. Okay, on to the next.
So landfill, we do have a couple of changes here, um. We have an increase in professional engineering services, just due to historically what we've used there. Um, probably should've been increased, uh, several years ago, honestly. Uh, we do have a decrease in casper dump fees, which, um, at fifty thousand, recycling tires, we're requesting to increase by twenty-five thousand. We're not properly keeping up and addressing this issue. Um, right now, we haul them off every year and we're only getting about a little over half, but then we just fill right back up. Um, and then the rest of it is all pretty small things, um, but if you guys have questions on that, let me know.
Staffing patterns stay the same?
Yeah.
Okay. And it's just, it's just normal business, that's not?
No, it's not a lot, but it's, uh, oh, it's just inflation blades again, I'm gonna.
Oh, yeah, I apologize, yes, for the.
No, but, I get it, I just, uh.
Here again, we're gonna have to look at one of these, sorry.
Um, so, again, we did look at the landfill, um, it's still negative, but it is a little bit better. It's negative three hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred thirty-three.
Ooh, so, come on.
Wow, okay.
Uh, three hundred fifty-nine thousand five thirty-three.
What is?
Um, it's on the next page, I believe, from where you're at.
Okay, okay.
Um, we do have a carry forward for a dump truck that's already, will probably potentially be here before the end of this budget year.
I really need it too, I guess they don't have, it's pre-booked down.
It's over, maybe on that one.
Yeah, we have a dump truck in, yeah, that's, mm-hmm.
And then I have, no idea what you wanna do here, because we need a compactor and it's a million dollars.
Has to be. Right.
Is this ninety thousand, uh, a lease thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been there when we bought the first one. They are not, she's.
This, this is, we have to, right?
Yeah, I mean.
This is a, a must, right, and in my, my opinion too, especially it's being, it's critical to the, uh, vertical expansion of it.
Yes. Yeah, I, I mean, that is definitely, we, we can struggle to even keep up with C and D and to do what we need to because of the current compactor.
How much are we negative?
Um, three fifty-nine five thirty-three.
Um, what about the scrape release?
Um, I.
That's ten.
I think that can wait.
How bad is their scraper?
Um, I mean, it's not good, but I think.
I heard it was pumping along.
With the condition, and we've been running it, and it's been running pretty good. And with the conditions of our funds, I would say the compactor is definitely the most critical out there. You could pull the others.
What's the future closure?
Uh, that's just to start saving money so that can definitely wait, cause clearly we cannot save right now.
No, you can't save if you're in there.
So that, that isn't crucial, except we better not lose sight of the fact that.
We definitely need to keep that on our ten-year plan. That needs to be a priority to make sure that we don't do the same th- where we're, we.
We did last year, it got us in the same mess that we started it.
Yes, where we hit that point and we're scrambling, trying to figure out how to fund it.
Yeah.
So yes, definitely do not lose sight of that, but it should come off this year.
Okay.
It w- even if it was there, it would not be spent, so it should, that future se- closure of C and D.
Ultimately. Ultimately, it's only, you're, you, we need the compactor.
Yes.
Is ultimately the.
The loader, the, what do we have for?
The future.
The loader can wait.
Okay. All right, two of those guys.
Real, real quick, what's the, I mean, I see thirty-five thousand nuts for a loader lease. What, what's the average cost of that maintenance on that, uh, loader that we have right now, but?
Um, well, weirdly, uh, one of our loaders is down right now. Uh, normally it does pretty good though. I think we'll be okay do pushing that one out.
Okay, okay. I just, I know it's thirty, it's thirty-five thousand, if we got the maintenance program, if it would save that, I do, do, that's what I was thinking, but if we're not.
Yeah, I.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to doing that, so.
So, um, moving on to recycling, um, we won't have really any changes here. Um, we are proposing to increase our part-time person to a full-time person. Um, again, we did, I, we went through this, uh, we're no longer negative here. We're positive eight thousand dollars.
Ooh.
Uh, yeah, I know, I'm celebrating eight thousand dollars right now.
I'm sorry, we have to do that, we have to, we have to joyful that something.
Um, and that's, that's with the increase to the full-time included.
Yeah.
Um, I actually was kinda crazy today and I made this really nice chart for you guys and I forgot it at the office. About why we needed a full-time person, so, um.
Chris, tell us.
We currently, with all of the task and responsibilities, we have a hundred and eleven point five hours of work a week. With our two and a half people, we only have a hundred hours of employee time. With the three people that give us one twenty, which puts us a little bit over, so we've got some cushion to actually do what we should be doing, um, and things like that. Um, but with that being said, we did have a capital, one capital re- or I guess if you guys have questions about that.
Yeah, I just got one question, what is a, about, I guess, a bad debt expense there? I know it's only fifty dollars or whatever, but what is?
Uh, I think that's collection fees, right?
Um, those, we charge fees for all the utilities, we have those base fees, including landfill and whatnot. So some of those, would they go out to, um, to the landfill or the recycling, they charge to, it's like a trade account. And then they get billed monthly. And some of those, we end up not being able to collect.
Okay, I just, I was like, I didn't wanna make sure I knew what it was, sorry.
Yeah, so that, that's what that is.
I, I, it's not, it's minimal, don't get me wrong, it's minimal, but.
Yep.
What is, is it?
You have a right to ask.
Yep.
Um, so capital, we had requested a forklift, um. And this is a need, obviously, we don't, with eight thousand dollars, have enough to budget this. Uh, the other thing that we added is the lean-to for commodities, and I know I've talked to some council members about this when we did the tour. Um, and I, we were waiting to do it, however, I got some new information, um, and I felt like this was actually maybe, especially with the condition of our funds, a good conversation to have. Um, initially, the very, the first reason that, uh, staff and I wanted to do this is because if we ship an entire truck of, and I'm gonna use cardboard because it's our biggest commodity, it's commodity, it's what we collect the most, it's what we get paid for. So we send, right now, we're getting about fifty dollars per, or it's forty dollars per ton, um, less shipping. If we could ship a whole truck, we would actually, after shipping, get about fifty to sixty dollars a ton, which is a huge increase. Um, I'm working, I'm gonna wo- work really hard to get the exact number for the lean-to and what the increase would be. So that alone is an increase. Our, um, Interwest paper, who does all of our hauling and purchases our commodities, talked to me today. And they notified me that they've now made a, or, um, finalized the contract with Nord Park Transportation, um, who has hubs all over and one here in Rollins. So we actually have the opportunity right now to save on shipping if we utilize, um, the same, we would still work with Interwest, but they would haul out when we are ready for a truck, send North Park, they drop the truck off and we would load it and they'd haul it off. Now, the disadvantage to doing this, um, is that we have to store our materials somewhere until we're ready, we have a full truck and it's ready to ship. Where right now, Interwest drops a truck off, we fill it up over time and then they come pick it up. So the increase that we would get for commodities and the decrease in shipping makes me feel like, in the condition of our account, that that is a bigger priority because of the return that we would get with that. Again, I could not prepare that for you guys today for this meeting, but I do wanna work on some really good information and what that, um, potential additional revenue and savings would look like, so that you guys can see that.
So with North Park being a, uh, national company, or, you know, is there a possibility that that could be the same situation, they could leave a trailer too?
So they do allow you to do that, however, they charge an eighteen-dollar per day fee, which then ends up being more than the fee now.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
They do.
So.
Yep.
Did ask that question too.
So where are you at on the forklift?
Uh, we do really need that too.
I think this was, uh, moved to go to an electric forklift so it would actually save on, um, propane costs too.
Yeah, and our forklift is definitely giving us a lot of maintenance problems.
It was a substantial amount, is a bigger, a bigger forklift allowing to lift more weight and everything.
An electric forklift will, like the one I had, uh, weighed ten thousand pounds. The gas one weighed forty-five hundred pounds, they lifted the same amount. The difference is, you pay thirty dollars a month for propane, you pay five dollars a month for electricity. At the end of five years, you pay thirty-five dollars to fill your propane and you pay five thousand dollars for a new battery. The other difference is between electric forklift and a gas one is mo- um, I've never seen an electric forklift that was capable of going on anything but flat surfaces. Like the electric one I had, if you drove it into, uh, the most hard-packed gravel ever, then you called Dave Keller with a wrecker to come ditch you out, twice. Um. They're, they're a good substitute. I would do electric one over a gas ten times in a warehouse-type situation. But it has to be absolutely flat, cannot be taken on gravel, they'll sink and they're. They, they, they just don't make electric forklift, to my knowledge, with the larger tires, so. That's a consideration. If you're gonna drive it outside, like in your driveways and stuff like you do,
The, the D two.
Then, then you're gonna run into a problem with electric one, I guarantee you. There's so much heavier.
I mean, it's more versatile and you can kinda, if somebody wants to borrow it from another department, it doesn't really be an issue. Do you wanna do this in, guys?
I paid two thousand for my forklift and two thousand for the battery charger. That's just kinda the way electrics are.
Doesn't sound very.
I used to haul my gas one on my trailer, I put my electric one on my trailer and I smashed the back of my trailer into the ground, the back of my tires on my pickup are that far off the ground. That much difference in weight. Just have to think about that. You can't road one.
You wanna leave it in?
Um, I think.
You wanna leave the forklift in?
Well, I, I think that, yeah, they need it, but I think this is a quote for an electric one.
Yeah, they need it.
They're about the same money, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I believe they are, this, cause I actually think that Pat got both.
They're very close.
Providing, providing the, you're doing the marathon.
Okay, and we'll look into it, definitely.
Now, they might, and they might make.
That's, especially if we go with a lean-to, I'm not gonna concrete that lean-to. We're, I wanna do a very basic roof, sidewall, backwall, that's it. I don't wanna put a garage door on it.
And they might make electric ones with the taller tires.
Mm-hmm.
But they didn't when I was looking for one.
So, what, when is the, when are you, you expected to have the projected price of a lean-to?
Um. I don't know.
By Christmas.
Well, I'm ju- I'm just asking, cause it's.
Oh, for, for breeding.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is we, you know, it's.
Oh, yes, I will have it by, I mean, I, I am going to, this is going to be a priority, cause I, after, I mean, I kind of already knew we could make more money and it was something we needed to do, but this, I think, is even more, and after seeing the fund balances. I think that's where, so I will definitely have this information to you so that you can make a decision at some point. I, I'm, I'm not gonna tell you, cause I'm so busy right now, it's not even funny.
Okay, so, let's leave that forklift in and we'll get a price on it and I'll do things.
Yeah, as soon as I have information, you guys will get it.
One, just one, one quick question, do you want me to, we already have plugged in the part-time recycling operators of full time, should we keep?
Just leave it, if we want it, we can do it later.
Okay.
But right now, it seems like we're needing the help and not having the hours.
Uh it's needed.
Okay, okay.
Okay, are we done with Danielle?
Yeah, we are, you know.
We're on the home stretch or?
We are, we really are now.
There you go, I knew you're keeping us right on track here, girl.
I try and.
You are, you're driving the bus, girl, you're doing an awesome job.
No, we're getting the interest, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, just look, look.
It's only fifteen after eleven, right there.
That would've been, that would've been good.
Um thank you guys for bearing with us all over, okay, other funds or insurance?
Self self insurance, we just kept the the same as before, no no difference.
What is it?
Self insurance, we just kept the same as before and that's to the best of our knowledge what we should be doing right now, cause.
We don't have everything for the insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
You won't tell July, you won't tell July?
Probably.
Um another thought I'm having, not to belabor this, um but every few years, we take a look at a different vendor to see if we can do better, particularly when we're paying all of it.
For you're talking to administration?
Just providers, yeah, yeah, providers.
Providers, providers.
Yeah, I asked them to prepare three or four of them to look at.
Thank you.
So that's pretty much it on that one. Contingency.
That's standing, we can't get around, that's spinning out, stream.
Which one's?
Yeah, that's the county, that's that's employee benefit.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think we just go to the dangerous building issue, dangerous building fund, now do you wanna take this for a second?
Oh, I can try. Okay, these are the more obscure ones.
And Danielle, if you wanna chime in on this part, please do, we're on dangerous building fund and.
Okay.
She says I'm running away from you guys, man.
She's done her part.
So these are, I have some idea, but you guys probably know a lot more about this than I do. So we have the dangerous building fund and so dangerous housing, we just have actuals in there. There's not a lot that's budgeted.
I probably had like four hundred and some thousand left as a fund that we carry over every year. And it's kinda restricted in some ways, but it's not like an enterprise fund. But what you're asking us is how many things we're gonna subsidize this year in the landfill for someone else, probably? Or pro- abandon, when, okay, let me start, when they come in and ask us for fee waivers, this is what you're asking us.
Uh this is also, so it's used for um cleanup week to refund the landfill, it's used for fee waivers. It's also used for dangerous building abatement, so anytime we pull um an ROG or anytime we spend any funds on a dangerous a a property that's been tagged as a dangerous condition, it comes out of this. If the city ends up, if we get into a condit- uh situation where we have a dangerous situation um and the property owner's not taking care of it, then we can do like an emergency abatement, it would come from here. Um I can tell you guys too, we actually will have an emergency abatement.
Thirteen or nine?
With the, yeah, Ninth Street with the retaining wall. Um so that absolutely needs to stay in there and we do need to make sure that we have some money here for those conditions.
So how much is in there now?
Four hundred and some thousand.
Oh, I.
But right now, what I'm saying is this isn't enough.
I agree.
Yeah, this is, well, right now for this coming up here, I have nothing because honestly, I don't know what to plug in here. Um so I am working with Pam and Amy.
I'm looking at the screen just. I guess I'm not understanding.
Yeah, it absolutely should be a carryover from that amount, so the the council typically does not fund that on an annual basis. As I stated last night, it's funded through the sale of municipal property, it's not fun, if we don't sell property every year, we're down to our limited stockpile of uh two large parcels of properties. But once those parcels are gone, we're 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 looking at annexation to the west, which they do not wanna be annexed into the city. Um and then we're centered by checkerboard, HUBBLM. BLM, we can work with them on public um facilities, but unfortunately, they have to remain public. So we cannot request land from them to then subdivide or provide a subdivision or uh resale. So the dangerous building fund is sacred, there's policies and resolutions that all of those funds go into that dangerous building and 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 so it should be removed back with unless this council decides to take a resolution to defund those amounts and remove them.
I don't think so.
One of the one of the problems I have is in our strategic plan, one of the very most important things was these dangerous and vacant buildings. And so we have a fund that we rob from to give away. We give it to people who have property and they ask for forgiveness of trash and then they don't clean their property up anyway, the last two or three didn't not clean up their property, it still looks like hell. Every year, we have that city clean up and everybody's like, oh, good, it'll make a cleaner city. And every year, we do it again and I don't really see an improvement to the city. I don't think we should give away the most sacred thing, the the most important thing to our town is those nasty buildings. In my opinion, they're dangerous, they're fire hazards, they look horrible, they're negative for economic development. But this year, we're gonna give away another thirty-five, forty thousand dollars out of that fund.
Okay.
And and in return, we're gonna get some free trash. The we've got to quit robbing that fund. We have to figure out some other way, if you wanna give away uh free dump days and don't take it out of there.
Okay, but for right now, Terry, let's let me just make a recommendation to you and the staff. Go back to June thirtieth and get the balance on that and that's what we will use.
That's where Terry just wanted to grab that.
There and plug that number in, now give us where our basis is and then that's up this a bit to about three of these. Danielle, is that property gonna cost us more than ten grand?
Forty thousand on the, it's over forty thousand on the uh the bid that they sent out in the email, correct?
We're gonna fund that.
Is that what it was?
Um do you, I don't remember the exact amount, it's over ten.
I thought I thought I seen something in there on that email that time, it was like forty thousand dollars.
Do you, was it that or? I actually thought it was more, to be honest.
I believe it's more than forty thousand.
I think it's more than forty two.
And we're gonna have to eat that, Amy?
Uh so this is that property that had an emergency abatement um four years ago. Um that's uh infringing on a neighbor's property. I just heard um as of this afternoon that the property is probably going into foreclosure, so um.
So why don't we let the foreclosure company take care of it?
Uh because we declared it a dangerous and emergency abatement and it is literally um any environmental condition could pull that down.
So with that, can is there something that happens now, like is there a lien process that goes for when that property is sold?
We worked on that, we worked on that yesterday.
Okay.
We're trying to secure that lean um that clear path to a lien or that clear path to an assessment so that it will run with the land and if it is sold, that would have to be reimbursed and paid. Right now, the only thing we could potentially have is if the utilities uh run in and they are uh pulled for any reason, lack of payment. The only uh pull we have is that city services would not be initiated until that amount would be made.
Okay.
That's what we're looking for.
So so ultimately, the new buyer is getting a free retaining wall?
Well, what I would say is I'd encourage you, we can give you the address, if you go through the alley and look at it. Um neighbors have um animals and young children, um it's just one of those situations that it's an immediate health and safety issues.
What what's that again? Do we have to, do we, do we have to replace the wall, is that what I'm understanding? Do we have to replace it or can we grade it down to a lower level and just remove dirt?
So there's a big uh variation in um between the neighbors.
Right.
But I would defer to Danielle and they did uh they did the structural analysis.
Right, would that be an option, instead of rebuilding an entire wall? Take the wall and then just bring the dirt down to a safe level or grade it?
It's, no, we had a structural engineer look at it and it's a um, I don't know the exact height, but you would have to secure that somehow. It's a very big rate change.
Danielle, is this the the house that sits on top of the hill on the corner?
It is on the corner.
On the corner of High Street and on the uh west side?
It would be the east side of Nine, it's on Ninth Street, Ninth and High on the east side.
On the east side?
Yes.
Okay, where are we at?
You can very clearly visibly see it from the alley, um I would be more than happy to send you guys some photos if that would help. Um I can also send you the en- structural engineer's report, but it definitely needs to be, there is no repairing it either, cause they looked at that as well.
So it's becoming, it's gonna, it'll come up to us for review at council level, so we'll have that information.
It'll have to go out, it'll have to go out to bid um because of the amount and go to you guys, so yes, and it will come from this one.
So Jody just grabbed the fund balance for this one, which is about five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which can become our expenditures. Um we're gonna have to plug in, we'll we'll plug it in right here.
I wonder how many millions of dollars it's gonna take to get rid of some of these really super scary structures? That that's what I wanna know, I mean, we're probably talking about ten million, maybe more, but ten million might do it.
If we if we don't take title to it until asbestos is removed and all the carbons, or if we can use brownfield money, if we, you know, we could use some brownfield money to remove hazards, so it depends on how we handle it, Terry.
It is still gonna cost ten grand whether or ten million, whether we get it from there, 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 there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at what it will cost the city of bombs proper. Um but yeah, we have to doggone careful how we do it.
Well, I'm just, I just, I just look at this fund and I know that, you know, if if you're saving for a car and you keep putting money in the jar and the kids are taking the money out of the jar, you ain't getting no car. So here we're putting, we have this money
Yeah, everything is.
And every time you turn around, we're either giving it away for free landfill to somebody that comes in wanting free landfill or or we give it away for free landfill week or, I mean.
I mean, the purpose.
We've gotta take care of this.
The purpose of that whole thing was to uh try to clean up our property, these buildings and houses. The problem, I agree with you, the problem we have is here, just right here, we gave, people came to us and they needed a a break on the landfill, we gave them a break on the landfill, they all did three cars right behind us.
Yeah, but the, well, and, Dabari, I know, I've watched several people come in and ask for free landfill and their place looks worse than it did before, Tommy Lawrence's place. Um um that motel on the other end of town, that you could, from the street, you cannot tell the difference. Tommy Lawrence's place, it's still.
They're still working on it.
Garbaged up, but they give free landfill but fees, but did did it, did it fix the problem? Did it make it look better? No, it did not, it still looks horrible.
They sold it.
Who sold what?
At Tom, Tom Lawrence's uh body shop.
We've been selling all her properties, except for the, except for the.
Oh.
Yeah, they know the people that are running the restaurant at Econo Lodge.
That's restaurant where?
Uh Econo Lodge.
No, they don't have them.
Who?
Whoever owns it, they 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 used to own that grandma's cafe on Royce Castle.
Okay, uh you're talking about Oliver's?
They bought that, that's where he killed.
I thought the old man died, and the old ladies and.
Yeah, he was bought, he was younger than.
Oh, okay, cause cause the old man died and the and the wife is in a nursing home, grandma.
Okay, can we get back to this, guys, I wanna go home pretty soon.
But what I'm saying is, if we keep giving that away, we're gonna have nothing to lose. You can't give it away.
Well, I I agree with you, Terry, we've got two, at least one motel is a problem. And the reason was, we were offered to take it, but the reason that we don't is asbestos.
Oh, sure.
We started another tear down one time and it was, ooh, okay, don't take it because.
Oh, I know, Linda, when we got rid of all them trailers between here and Sinclair and cleaned that up, of course, it looks like hell again, they let it grow back. But I think we spent like fifteen thousand dollars paying a person to come get the asbestos out and it was a ring that went from their furnace to their chimney, a ring of asbestos that big around in each one of those and it was fifteen thousand dollars. And then we went for the green fields or the brownfields grant to clean up the earth, cause it was littered, contaminated.
Yeah, I think that um.
But what, but my point is, if we're gonna tear down buildings and we're gonna get rid of these buildings, we can't, we can't continue to give away the money that we're gonna do that with. And we are, every year.
Terry, I think you have to take each one in its face, uh case by case, like if something burned down, the people are impoverished or living out of town, they have no means of cleaning it up, that's why we need a lean program that again.
Oh, I I'm not arguing about the lean program, but what I'm saying is, is we have some money to do that with, we're buying cotton candy with it. We're having a good time, we're giving away free stuff.
Well, I think we.
And it makes us feel good to give away free stuff, we have no money to tear down buildings anymore.
But it does, what it does is further our building programs and clean up of our community and that's the.
I don't think so.
That's, and there are some people don't do what we ask them to do, but you they you can't get the money unless you take it to the landfill and that's where we give the money to, you know, and we're not just handing out a check.
Yeah, but people should clean up their own yards without being paid to do it.
Well, some people are unable to, Terry.
Then they shouldn't have the crap in their yard, where'd they get the money to buy the crap in their yard?
Well.
I mean.
That's what I was saying, Terry, where are we at?
Um, let me go back up here. Uh we're right here on the dangerous building fund, we just plugged that in. Um the housing loan fund for HUD, we plugged in seventy-five because that's what the balance is.
Okay, we're still, are we still doing high streets? Okay, voucher rate programs, do we, do we do that any longer, is that what HUD is?
I haven't heard anything about vouchers.
Amy's gonna be our expert on that one, I think, to that question.
Yeah, I think Amy too.
I was whispering this one.
Amy?
Can you explain the HUD about being dead? The HUD money, so they're probably, I mean, doing the same, the last four hours of.
No way.
The the seventy-five is the HUD.
No, we're not.
We're really close, really close.
I don't wanna talk, uh we're not doing.
So Amy, we're on the seven um.
Yeah, Amy needs to tell us what's going on.
Housing loan fund for HUD, seventy-five thousand.
Is that a section, well, you should have the one fifty, is that another one that was?
It was, yeah, it's messy, it's a, was one fifty, a seventy-five, seventy-five is had a one fifty, seventy-five, seventy-five, yeah.
So all that's really there, I think it's just seventy-five thousand, it's just like, you look at the fund balance here and it says seventy-five thousand and that's.
I thought it said an original balance of seventy-five, which is six hundred and fifty, and this is seventy-five.
But the actual, is that what we do with that security?
Yes, it absolutely, yeah, it's, and then it's from the uh, the old housing being, uh, and I hate it, I try to, I'm sorry.
So it is, it is the one fifty or is the seventy-five?
I think the fund balance showed seventy-five.
It should be one fifty.
Just over, just over seventy-five thousand.
Just seventy-five? That's what the fund balance says, but we could, we'll have a, we'll we'll dig in that one a little bit.
Yeah, cause I understand that's that's something we don't, we can't expand.
We can.
Unless unless it was, it can't hold a rehab program, which was administration. Okay, that's not anything we have to decide.
Yeah, we'll 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 figure that one out.
Okay, guys, anything else?
Specific, uh it's capital's facility tax fund, I don't know.
So how did it go for you?
Uh we can check on this one, cause we're also gonna plug in the capital facilities tax fund, I don't know.
The housing loan fund that HUD is exactly seventy-five thousand according to the report.
So maybe they probably have a chance to get some over to your administration and clear out that fund, cause it's old, old, old.
Yeah, I think Pam said that it's a requirement that we keep that there for however long.
Bring your sleeping bags.
Some bedtime, yeah.
Okay, um where where do you need us to go next, guys?
Um, we've got, uh, specific purpose tax number one. I think, again, we need to look at this, but we can just leave that alone, and then, and I think our last item here, well, two items, there's the impact assistance, which we kinda talked about already, we'll work on that, and then economic development fund, it looks, what's the fund balance here, Jody, could you look at that one? Cause this, I think you were talking about this one earlier, um, eight hundred thousand and two hundred thousand, and if that's what our fund balance is, we just need to plug it back in.
Yeah, I just need the word, a wire, you know, it's like.
So, this.
So.
This is the financial statement.
Might, so, did we, I was told that we took this.
So, so potentially, that fund may decrease, um, the, the economic development fund.
With, with the developer, or what they, uh?
It, it may be reallocated back to the dangerous building fund, so there's a resolution that sale municipal properties will go into the dangerous building fund. However, it appears that the last few, or the last property we sold was diverted into this economic development fund, which would have required the council to remove that resolution that was imposed before. So, if you wanna reallocate it, you have that authority, but essentially, it needs, if that's what occurred, it needs to go back into the dangerous building fund, and then you would take appropriate action through resolution to move it back to an economic development.
What I'm seeing, though, we've had, apparently, we've had some projects that have been, um, allocated or something here. So, I think there's a discussion.
And, and I'm, I, I have requested that we go into that, and I, we're gonna look at spending those numbers.
Thank you, I, I, I think we're done now.
I think we're done.
Do, does anybody have any questions or anything to ask?
You, I have one, it might, it's probably more specific to you guys, and this goes back to the landfill, I didn't mean to skip this, but the Bank of the West loan, we showed last year paid four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars.
We paid that off.
Paid it off.
Yeah, it's paid off.
Um, where's that money going now? Is it going to the other loan?
We still have one point two million or something like that sitting on the books we have to pay off.
So, should we just pay it off and not have a fifty-five thousand dollar debt every year? We don't have any money to pay it off.
I think, I think this is something that we really need to look at, like, and I, it's irrelevant right now because of a money situation, however, um, Daryl, um, that loan is so long, it's over twenty-seven years, that's ridiculous.
Right.
So, I think we need to look at that, to get it down to pay off to four to five years, but we don't have the money in that.
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was wondering where this four sixty-nine is, if, if we had four sixty-nine that year to pay it, are we using that same four sixty-nine to go to the next, did we roll it to the next loan?
There isn't enough money in there.
We had two loans, we're making payment on two loans.
Yes, we did, yes, we did.
This one got paid off, are we paying the amount on those two, on the one?
We're, we're paying it down every single year, Terry.
Okay, but if you have two loans, and you make a payment to each one, one's paid off, are you taking the amount that you paid on these two loans and now paying it on one?
We haven't been doing that, no, but.
And, and the reason I ask is, cause that four sixty-nine, if, if it got paid off last year, um, oh, I guess, that's why we're like.
The four sixty-nine is not new revenue, it's, if, if I understand right, that it was taken out of the reserves to pay that off.
Oh, so we could take out of the reserves and pay off the one point two?
If we have, if we have it, with all these funds being where they're at, we have to, but the next year, Daryl, we can really address. Now, I'm sorry, but our last, um, treasurer, our, our finance officer had a whole list of, he had plugged in for us, all of the debt that we had, we were, we were in pay down on some of that. And what I'm hearing is that we're not gonna be able to do that because we're in to subsidize all these enterprise funds. So, that, that's our kicker, that's our, that's our elephant in the room.
Right, okay.
So, but, yeah, I, I really believe we should take a look at reducing, at least getting that paid off, and break the pace, and then we can address other issues that's round down.
Right.
Well, I ain't gonna wait twenty-seven years.
Oh, we did. I will. Yeah, but I'll be damned. What's, what happens if we miss a payment, is there like a huge penalty on that one, or?
It's state land for, it's a la- state land investment board loan, and they're just gonna come and tell us to pay it.
Oh, okay.
I think, I don't think they're gonna repossess their landfill, I wish they would.
We go down to Cheyenne to have to go, we can't pay the bill we got.
Yeah, we will, it will hamper our ability to do anything.
Well, we got it, we, didn't we have a projected six million dollars worth of sales tax, and we're getting thirteen, right?
No.
In general?
Yeah, general fund, like, yeah, we, we're doing, yeah, we're doing really well with the general fund, um, over our budget, a lot more so.
Okay, so, that's a, that's a lot of million extra.
But a lot of that's coming from the wind.
So, I don't care where it comes from, it's the same money.
What, what are you? What are you, what are you, what are you asking?
Well, if we have seven million dollars extra, that we didn't anticipate, we have one, we have a couple million dollars to catch up our loan to our other funds.
Only ten percent, but per each year that we get loan, correct?
Yeah, those are enterprise funds, you can't do that.
Okay, but so then, with the other six million that we can, didn't anticipate, or six or seven, we didn't anticipate, this one million dollar loan is.
For which one?
The, the landfill.
No, it's an enterprise one.
Yeah, it is an enterprise one, Terry, we can borrow up to ten percent.
No, no, you can only be subsidized from the general fund up to ten percent, that's why I say, don't do it, uh, don't do the ten percent, do a loan.
Like you're thinking, and then pay it.
And then typically, they have to pay that back, or you just let it go for ten years and then forget the loan. A lot of people in Colorado have done that.
And so, what, how many years have we had on that loan so far, I, I think five years to carry out.
Um, we have finally found the debt instruments, and I have to go and raise all of that information, so, that's where I'm at with it.
I also seen in there, it shows for this year, actuals eighty-nine thousand instead of fifty-five for that loan, was, what was the increase of the thirty-nine?
I don't, I, at this moment, I, I don't know.
Okay, okay.
No.
I could shoot you a mail and then ask.
Yeah, I'm gonna be gone the next two days, tomorrow, we sell our house in Monmouth, and so, I'm gonna have to sign the papers. So, next week, um, and I'm gonna take them with me and try to read them for the weekend, sometimes it works, sometimes not, but I need to read through all of those debt instruments to see not only what the payments are, but what restrictions we have to put to the side.
Right, okay.
So, uh, I'll need like another week to get it.
Okay.
Nope.
Well, thank you for all your help.
Good job.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Linda.
Okay, are we all done, guys?
We're done, thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, Jody, and if I was rude, I apologize.
No, you have to go, and I appreciate that, so, no, nobody will.
No, I don't have to close, we're done. This isn't a fucking.
Oh, yeah.
I should've.
We had like ten minutes total. Yeah?
Don't know, I'm not gonna say it.
Oh, yeah.
Because, because.
All done, have a good night.
Thanks, Amy, for hanging in with us.
It's almost tomorrow.
We appreciate it. You too. You too, Miss Glor.